Everyone, welcome to the Judiciary Committee. We have three agendas today. This is our nine thirty agenda. There's three governor's messages for nominations on it. We have a two-minute time limit on testifying fires. If you're on Zoom, there'll be a little countdown clock, and if you're here in person, a little buzzer will go off at two minutes. So first up today on our agenda is Governor's Message five sixty-two submitting from consideration and confirmation to the Civil Rights Commission. Our Sima Mueller for a term of expired June thirty, twenty twenty-three. First up on GM five sixty-two. Is Robin Wurtzel for the Hawaii Civil Rights Commission. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, and I don't think there are members of the committee.
Yeah, no.
Okay, thank you. We stand on our written testimony in strong support of our Sima Mueller as a commissioner and appreciate the hearing.
Thank you. Next is Gerard Silva in opposition, Natalie Nimmer in support, Julian Walsh in support, Craig Schles in support. I don't see anyone here. Anyone? That's everybody that signed up for GM five sixty-two. Does anyone else wish to testify on Ms. Mueller's behalf? If not, Ms. Mueller, or if you're ready to make an opening statement, come on. Well, I'm sorry. Go ahead and sit down, but um, any questions for? Okay. Good morning.
Good morning. Chair, Senator Fonte, I believe I've spoken to both of you personally. So I don't know if I need to rehash some of the information that I provided. As I stated to both of you, I am serving on the commission on an interim basis currently, and it would be my honor to continue to serve if you approve my nomination.
Yeah, you can go ahead and say a little more. Presumably, there are people listening on Zoom, so go ahead.
Sure. As I said, I am serving on an interim basis. I started serving in July. I was nominated by Governor in July to replace Dr. Jojo Peter. As he passed away, Jojo was a friend and colleague. He was a staunch advocate for the rights of for the rights of immigrants and for people with disabilities. He was in the wheelchair himself. He was from Chuk. So in particular, he advocated staunchly for the rights of Micronasians in Hawaii and trying to get people to understand what their rights are. As I said, he was a friend and colleague, and I wanted to make sure that the work that he started continues. I did a lot of the work with him. The work is consistent with a lot of the volunteer work that I do myself, volunteering with Legal Aid, Access to Justice, Legal Lines, We Are Oceania, Marshallese Education Day, the Youth Summit, Micronesian Youth Summit. So I believe it's a good fit with the work that I currently do. And as I said, with your approval, I would be honored to continue to do that work.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions? I did have a question. So you do have a lot of background in the Kofa area. Do you intend to continue to work on the kind of issues that Mr. Peters was hoping to?
Yeah, I do. And I actually, myself, worked in the compact negotiation office with the Marshall Islands when out of college. So I am very familiar with those issues. It's an issue that I'm passionate about. As I said, being from the Marshall Islands, it impacts a lot of people I know. So I do want to continue to do that type of work.
Okay. Do you, what, what, what types of discrimination do you see against Micronesian, Kofa Nation members now?
I think that there's a lot of misunderstanding about what they qualify for, what the benefits they qualify for. They're in a special immigrant status. They're considered non-immigrants. So they sort of fall out of citizens and immigrant rights. So they're in a special category of their own, and I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about that. And in particular, what benefits they qualify for, and I think it's just a lot of misunderstanding about that. And I, along with a lot of my colleagues and friends, are, you know, striving to try to get some understanding on those issues.
Okay. And then one last question. So you're currently an attorney, your partner?
I am currently a partner with Crossman.
Crossman, okay.
Yes.
Okay, members, other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next nominee, which is Stacy Moniz for the Commission on the Status of Women for a term to expire six thirty, twenty twenty-seven. First up on six six three is Gerard Silva in opposition, Victor Ramos in opposition, Kathy Betts in support. And none of them seem to be here. Anyone else wish to testify on GM six six three? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Moniz, would you like to make an opening statement?
Aloha. Thank you so much. I am currently serving on the Commission on the Status of Women for the past few years, and I am very interested in continuing to serve as the Maui representative on the Commission on the Status of Women. As I shared with you in our conversation, I've worked in domestic violence for over thirty-seven years and then feel like that really was very informative in terms of issues facing women. And as I've gotten older and now I'm facing issues facing women of a certain age, I recently in twenty twenty survived breast cancer. And so now I have an understanding of a different kind in terms of medical needs and healthcare, et cetera. I really do feel honored to be able to represent Maui at the state level. And I also feel very grateful to be able to share with Maui what's happening at the state level. So I would love to continue to serve in this way. And if I can just add my support for my fellow Commissioner Edie New Miller from Kauai, who has done amazing things on her island to raise awareness about women's issues and bringing things to the table from Kauai. I appreciate that, too. And I wish I had submitted written testimony, but I figured I would take an opportunity right now to share that, too. So yeah, definitely open to any questions.
All right. Thank you. Members, any questions? So, so I understand that the, there's a vacancy now for the Executive Director of the Commission on the Status of Women. What are you going to be looking for in a, someone to, to, to take that position? What qualities do you think they need to have?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. That's actually one of the reasons that I really do want to stay on the commission to provide some consistency through this transition. I think it's such a critical position. You know, you're representing a whole very diverse state. So I would look for someone who has a really strong understanding and working knowledge of issues facing women in Hawaii and across the state. I do think that having a legal background was very, very helpful for both the previous and the person before the Executive Director, having a legal background is really helpful. There's a lot of navigating and facilitating of meetings that are very, very complex and people with very wide-ranging opinions about same issues. So one would have to be a very good facilitator and be able to have a good presence, a strong presence, and remember the role of the Executive Director of the Commission is to really look at the needs of the women of the state of Hawaii.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Members, any questions? If not, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and move on to the final governor's message on this agenda, which is GM six seventy for Edith Newmiller. This is also for the Commission on the Status of Women for a term to expire six thirty, twenty twenty-seven. First up for Ms. Miller is Zata Club of Hilo in support. Gerard Silva in opposition, Millie Spencer in support, Angela Hoover in support, Julie Too Long in support, Darcia Yukimura in support, and Kathy Betts in support. That's everybody who signed up for GM six seventy. Does anyone else wish to testify in GM six seventy? Okay, seeing none, no one to ask questions, ask questions of. So we'll go to the nominee, Ms. Miller. Would you like to make an opening statement?
Yes. Good morning, Senator Rhodes and Commissioners President. I am honored to be nominated by the governor and happy to be here today.
Members' questions?
I have one.
Senator El Fante.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Is it Neil Miller?
Yes.
Yes, Neil Miller. Yeah, thank you. I know I didn't have the opportunity to meet with you, and I hope that I do meet with you prior to your confirmation. Well, the one question I have is, why do you want to serve?
I want to continue to serve through the dates of twenty twenty-six. I've done that for the last three years, and I continue to report from the State Commission on their meeting highlights to Kauai Committee on the Status of Women. And we like to be very visible on the Kauai community in regards to women's issues, especially coming from the state and as well sharing it on Kauai.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Members of them, questions? So what, in turn, you've been on the board, on the commission for a while now. What do you view as the best, the thing that you're most proud of that you've done so far?
I think, I think it was during either pre-COVID or around COVID time, we did a human trafficking forum. I was the lead in getting four community key people to be on the forum, and then also our former Executive Director Kara Jabalis, and also a representative from the Arizona, University of Arizona, who provided data on sex trafficking and the islands. They provided a lot of good data, and I think that was one of my proudest because of we provided it for the Kauai community. So it was an eye-opener for many, many people to learn more about the human trafficking, sex trafficking that's happening in Hawaii.
Thank you. Other questions, members? If not, thank you very much, members of, unless you're concerned or anything, you can just go straight to the decision. Is it acceptable?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see. First up is GM five sixty-two for our Sima Mueller for consideration and confirmation of the Civil Rights Commission for a term to expire quite shortly, actually, June thirty, twenty twenty-three. The recommendation here is to can advise and consent to the nomination. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Recommendations for advice and consent, Chair Rhodes?
I.
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 I. Thank you very much. Next up is GM six sixty-three, Stacy Moniz, the Commission on the Status of Women for a term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty-seven. Recommendation here is to advise and consent to the nomination. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
The Members' President, are there any no votes or reservations? There are none. Measure pass.
Thank you. Next up is GM six seventy, Edith Newmiller, for Commission on the Status of Women, also for term to expire June thirty, twenty twenty-seven. The recommendation here as well is to advise and consent to the nomination. Questions or concerns?
Sure.
Yes.
I'll be voting with reservations only because I have not met with Edith yet, and I hope to meet with her, but I thank her for her willingness to serve and be on, on this commission. Thank you.
Understood. Any other concerns or questions? If not, Vice Chair.
The Members' President, any reservations? Any no votes?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and we do have another hearing at in, or adjourned. Welcome back to our second agenda, the Judiciary Committee meeting, Committee this Thursday morning. Ten, this is our ten AM agenda. This is a series of HCRs and one SR. First up is HCR, oh, I'm sorry, and we do have a two-minute time limit on testimony for Zoom. There should be a little countdown timer for anybody in the room. A little buzzer, a little beep will go off. First up today is HCR fifty-one, for just a governor to initiate a clemency program for individuals who have been prosecuted for cannabis-related offenses. First up is Frank Stiefel for Last Prisoner Project. Supposedly on Zoom in support, Nico Leverance, drug policy forum of Hawaii. Oh, I'm sorry, there you are. Go ahead, Mr. Stiefel, how do you pronounce your name?
Yeah, it's Stiefel. Yeah, good morning, Chair, and, and members in the committee. My name is Frank Stiefel, and I'm testifying on behalf of the Last Prisoner Project, which is a nonpartisan nonprofit focused on cannabis-related criminal justice reform. I'm testifying on behalf of the Last Prisoner Project to implore the members of this committee to pass House Concurrent Resolution fifty-one, which urges Governor Green to initiate a clemency program that can provide relief for individuals still under supervision for a cannabis conviction. Over the course of last year and throughout this legislative session, LPP worked with members of the legislature to outline evidence-based policy recommendations for inclusion in any legalization proposal to ensure retroactive relief for those criminalized by prohibition. We were disappointed that the legalization legislation that was being considered this year and which included retroactive relief mechanisms did not even receive a hearing in the House. It's unfortunate that many individuals in Hawaii will continue to bear the lifelong burden of having a cannabis criminal record and continue to serve sentences for cannabis-related convictions. However, the establishment of a dedicated cannabis clemency program can create a pathway to relief for individuals whose continued incarceration is no longer in the interests of justice and represents a first step in addressing the harm caused by decades of failed drug policies. We look forward to supporting Governor Green's office as they roll out a cannabis clemency program and encourage the Hawaii State Legislature to prioritize legislation next year that would create state-initiated processes to provide broad retroactive relief for every individual who has been thrust into the criminal justice system due to cannabis prohibition. Thank you for your time and more than happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Next is Nico Leverance for Drug Policy Forum of Hawaii in support ACLU Hawaii.
Sorry, Chair, they're not on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. Dylan Armstrong in support, Nanaia Lo in support, Tola Takuta in support, Barbara Best in support, B. A. M. Clintock in support, Kristen Young in support, David Kisor in support, Emily Sarasa in support, Michael E. K. M. Alder with comments, Dylan Ramos in support, and Dawn Ward for Marijuana Policy Project in opposition. If any of you are here and wish to testify on Zoom, welcome to testify. Otherwise, that's everybody that signed up for HCR fifty-one. Does anyone else, anyone else wish to testify in HCR fifty-one? Oh, Sharona, you with ACLU?
Yes. Aloha, Chair, Committee members. Carrie Anne Shirota, Policy Director on behalf of the ACLU Hawaii. We strongly support this resolution. We believe that this is a matter of good governance. We want to urge Governor Green to utilize full clemency powers. This is an important start to focus on cannabis-related offenses, but we'd like to see it expanded to other drug offenses as well, as well as other categorical groups. I just came out of the Oversight Commission meeting where they focus on the severe overcrowding in our jails and prisons. They highlighted what's happening at H triple C on Hawaii Island, and they just reported that in the last month, two more individuals died. A twenty-something-year-old at O triple C who died by hanging, and another eighty-year-old who died at Saurul. The fact that there is too many people who are incarcerated in our jails and prisons who can be safely released into our community, and it is unconscionable not to use every tool at our disposal, strategies proven to decarcerate and allow people to transition back home into our community. This is one important tool. Not only can it decrease the population, but it's also can correct injustices for people who may have been sentenced harshly for past behaviors. We'd also like to highlight that this can also be used as a tool to address racial disparities in our criminal legal system. We know without a doubt for generations, native Hawaiians and other Pacific Islanders have been desperately represented in our criminal legal system at every stage of the criminal justice system. And this can address that. And lastly, the cost. We all know that it's so expensive, the most expensive response to crime and the least effective. Let's utilize our resources to what works. Let's embrace clemency as other governors have done in other states. Thank you for the opportunity to testify and for supporting this measure. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else wish to testify in HCR fifty-one? Seeing none, members' questions? I have a question. Senator Gabbard, go ahead.
For the Last Prisoner, Frank, is that, I think that was his name, Last Prisoner Project. See, still it is.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Yep, still here. Yep.
Yeah, Frank, I was wondering, since you're a national organization, what is the, what's happening in Maile in terms of legislation such as this?
Are you asking as far as legis, so legislation regarding legalization and criminal?
No, no, not legalization, but just something like this, the clemency thing that's called for in this, in this resume.
In this resolution, yeah. So, yeah, so there are, there are plenty of examples of other governors who have launched clemency programs. I think you can look back at what Governor Kate Brown did in Oregon after leaving office and the, and the pardons that she, she issued out to folks that have been impacted by the war on drugs, obviously, particularly specifically by cannabis prohibition. And there's Governor Inslee, there's, there's a few different governors that have launched similar programs targeting folks that are, you know, incarcerated, but also obviously under supervision for cannabis-related sentences.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Other questions, members? If not, thank you very much, everyone, for being here. We'll go ahead and move on to the next measure, which is HCR seventy-two urging the Office of Youth Services and Family Court of the First Judicial Circuit to collaborate in identifying processes, procedures, and strategies for partnering with community organizations to maximize rehabilitation and minimize recidivism for juvenile offenders. First up on HCR seventy-two is Judge Viola in support. Next is Leanne Gillespie for Office of Youth Services with comments, and Judith Clark, Hawaii Youth Services Network. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. I'm Judith Clark, Executive Director of Hawaii Youth Services Network, a statewide coalition of youth-serving organizations, and we're in strong support of this resolution. We know that it takes a village to raise a child, and the only way that we can effectively address the issues that lead to disproportionate engagement with the juvenile justice system is to involve stakeholders at all levels within the government, nonprofit, faith-based, and business sectors, as well as members of the affected communities and populations. I am really happy to say there are some great collaborations and partnerships that have been sustained for a long period and are extremely effective because the number of incarcerated youth at the youth correctional facility has declined by eighty-two percent since twenty-ten. There is a local multi-agency partnership that recently received a ten-million-dollar Kellogg Foundation grant in a worldwide competition to continue efforts to create culturally appropriate prevention and early intervention programs that will keep our young people out of the juvenile justice system. Hawaii Youth Services Network is currently working with the Office of Youth Services and multiple organizations statewide on the startup of the Safe Spaces for Youth Pilot Project that was established by the legislature last year. We hope and are delighted by the support of the legislature toward these collaborative efforts to reduce juvenile justice system involvement. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Next up is Berkeley Policy Advocacy Clinic. Good morning.
Good morning.
Wherever you are.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbard, and members of the committee. My name is Amanda Chang, representing the Policy Advocacy Clinic at Berkeley Law. The clinic is a member of the National Debt Free Justice Campaign, which works across the country to eliminate monetary sanctions, including fees, fines, and restitution assessed against youth in the juvenile legal system and their families. We stand on our written testimony in support of HCR seventy-two, and we also highly encourage the Office of Youth Services and the judiciary to include data assessment and data collection as part of their efforts to reduce youth recidivism and improve outcomes for native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islander youth. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Next is Carrie Anne Sharota for American Civil Liberties Union of Hawaii. Good morning again.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. Carrie Anne Sharota, ACLU Hawaii. We strongly support this resolution. We want to applaud the Judiciary Office of Youth Services and the community that has worked collaboratively for the last decade plus to reduce our incarcerated population. That is a model that we can work towards, not only for the youth, but also for the adult system. Having said that, within our youth system, there are still racial disparities that persist, and I like to highlight some of those. Native Hawaiian and indigenous youth from Micronesian islands are four-point-one times more likely to be arrested, five-point-six times more likely to refer to court, ten times more likely to be detained, and seven-point-five times more likely to be found, quote, delinquent compared to white youth. Clearly, this is a matter of code that has not been crafted, to use the words of the judiciary, that these racial disparities persist. In coming together, working collaboratively, drawing upon the wisdom of our own indigenous communities, but also looking at other successful strategies and other jurisdictions, not only locally, nationally, but literally internationally, and to implement those practices here so that we can continue to decrease the population and also reduce and eliminate these racial disparities, which goes against the grain of our system of equity, fairness, and justice. Thank you for the opportunity to testify in support of this measure.
Thank you very much. That's everyone who signed up to testify in HCR seventy-two. Does anyone else wish to testify in HCR seventy-two? Seeing none, members' questions? Chair, Senator Gabbard.
The question for Judith with Office of Youth Services. She's still here.
I'm with Hawaii Youth Services Network, not the State Office of Youth Services.
Okay.
But I'm happy to answer questions.
Yeah, Judith, I just wanted to ask if the Youth Challenge Academy is in my district in Kalailoa, just a few hundred yards from where I live, and I know it's been a very successful program over the years. I'm just wondering how much interaction that you have with YCA and in terms of helping our youth.
Well, Youth Challenge Academy takes an approach that is very effective with some specific populations of youth who are at risk for the, of the juvenile justice system. My organization doesn't work closely with Youth Challenge Academy because we don't do direct services ourselves. But members of their staff have participated in our professional development training programs, and we did work with the Department of Health to do an assessment of their effectiveness in a, in their teen pregnancy prevention efforts that were funded through DOH.
I just, you know, the reso is about the agencies collaborating. I was just.
Right.
Yeah.
We have collaborated more closely with several of the agencies that work with the Kalailoa Health and Wellness Center that's on the grounds of the youth correctional facility, including RISE and Holly Keepa. You know, and we, and I serve as the nonprofit representative on, on the Hawaii Trauma Informed Care Task Force, which is addressing, you know, a number of issues that our young people experience that may put them at risk of involvement in the juvenile justice system.
Thank you, Judith. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Members, other questions on each, on House Concurrent Resolution seventy-two? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, everyone. We'll go ahead and move on to the next reso, which is HCR seventy-four, encouraging the facilitation of a path to citizenship for immigration, immigrants from parties to the contacts of free association. First, first up on HCR seventy-four is Giovani Domingo de la Cruz for the Office of Community Services in support. Next is Marcus Calatachi for the Hawaii Civil Rights Commission. Also in support, Gerard Silva in opposition. That's everybody who signed up for HCR seventy-four. Does anyone else wish to testify in HCR seventy-four? Seeing on members, there's no one to answer questions of, so we'll go ahead and move on to HCR eighty. Let's see. Yes, HCR eighty-seven, this request is requesting the Office of Elections Preparing to Submit a Proposal to the Legislature on the Cost and Personnel Required to Prepare and Distribute Voter Information Guide. First up on HCR eighty-seven is Scott. 87 is Scott Nago for the Chief Elections Officer. Good morning.
Uh, good morning. The Office of Elections was standing in written testimony for, uh, providing comments, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. Next, next is Gretchen Quongness in support, Gerard Sullivan, opposition, Nico Leverance in support. That's everybody who signed up on HCR 87. Does anyone else, anybody else wish to testify in HCR 87? Seeing on members, questions? Okay, let's go ahead and move on to HCR 88. This requested the judiciary to prepare a master developmental plan, including a capital improvement project request to upgrade the South Kohala District Court. There is no testimony on this one, so no one to ask questions of. We'll move on to HCR 200 urging the President of the United States to publish the Equal Rights Amendment as the 28th Amendment of to the Constitution of the United States of America. First up is Gerard Silva in opposition. Uh, Michael Holder in support. And that's everybody who signed up for HCR 200. Does anyone else wish to testify? Come on, come on up. Good morning.
Angela Melody Young testifying um on behalf of CARES um, in strong support. So Mark R. Warner and Tim Kane, both from the District of Virginia, um, advocated for the bicameral and bipartisan resolution to immediately remove the ratifications that line for the Equal Rights Amendment, and um, it took a critical step towards enshrining equality for women in the U.S. Constitution. Um, the resolution follows the 2020 passage of an amendment by the Virginia General Assembly, which made Virginia the 38th and final state needed to ratify the ERA. The Equal Rights Amendment was first um introduced 100 years ago to codify, codify gender equality. Since 1923, the constitutional amendment um, the constitution amendment was introduced in every session of Congress until it passed through both the House and Senate in 1972. Congress then placed a seven-year deadline on the ratification process before extending the deadline to 1982. During this period of time, only 35 states ratified the ERA, filling to meet the 38-state threshold to before the arbitrary deadline. Um, ratifying the ERA would serve as the, so as the 28th Amendment, the ERA would serve as a new tool for Congress, for federal agencies, and in the courts to advance equality in the fields of workforce and pay pregnancy discrimination, sexual harassment and violence, reproductive autonomy, and protections for LGBTQIA individuals. Enshrining this protection in our constitution would ensure enduring protections for all Americans across the country. It would also signal to the courts that they would apply a more rigorous level of review to laws and government policies that discriminate on the basis of sex, making it more likely for them to be struck down. Um, so we are in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to testify in HCR 200, HCR 200? Seeing none, members, questions? All right, hearing none. Let's go ahead and move on to um, Senate Resolution 202. This requests the Office of the Administrative Director of the Courts of the Hawaii State Judiciary to collect, compile, and share data on the assessment of fees, court costs, fines, restitution, and in cases against minors. First up on SR 202 is Darcy Forester, Office of Public Defender.
Aloha, Chair Rhodes. Um, I'm sorry, I'm having a problem with my video. It won't turn on, but if you can hear me, may I?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead. Go ahead. Good morning.
Sorry about that.
There you go.
Aloha. Um, on behalf of the Office of the Public Defender, we are in support of SR Senate Resolution 202. Uh, in particular, I did want to focus on our written testimony and our request to include as part of the data collected, information on how much money is being spent by the judiciary to monitor uh restitution amounts. Um, I don't want the issue of restitution to be lost in the data when it comes to fines and fees. Um, we have, I believe, at least two dedicated probation officers whose job it is to uh, monitor restitution. And I would like to focus on the section of the resolution that states that um, jurisdictions in the majority of states that assess fees, costs, fines, and restitution to youth spend more money trying to collect those outstanding debts than they receive in revenue. And I think we need data to fully understand that particular section of the resolution so that moving forward into the next legislative session, we can make more informed decisions on what to do about juvenile fines, fees, um, and restitution payments. So thank you very much, and I'm available for any follow-up questions.
Thank you. Uh, next is Pamela Ferguson-Brye, Crime Victim Compensation Commission. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair Members. Pam Ferguson-Brye, the Executive Director of the Crime Victim Compensation Commission. Um, as you know, the Crime Victim Compensation Commission provides compensation to victims of violent crime and also runs um, a restitution project. Um, so we um, are fairly experienced regarding that issue. Um, we support this uh resolution with amendments to ensure that the rights of victims to restitution are also considered um, in any recommendations that are made, and also urge that an independent agency um, or committee develop the recommendations to the legislature to ensure that um, the rights and needs of victims are addressed um, in this, in this process. Our testimony relates solely to the issue of restitution. As I said, that in, in my testimony, the resolution asked the court um, to look at this issue without rega- any regard at all um, to the rights and needs of victims to recover financially um, what their losses are as a result of the crime. Um, victims in Hawaii have a statutory right to restitution. For many crime victims, it's the only thing that they see in the system that represents to them that the system worked for them um, is restitution. Um, we always wonder in doing the work we do um, in talking to people across the country and as we develop this project, why is the question always, how can the offender afford to pay? Why is it that we don't consider, how is it the victim is the one that's supposed to pay instead then? Why would we shift the burden of crime-related losses from the offender to the victim? Uh, we think that's really one of the fundamental questions um, in looking at this issue. Restitution and reparations to victim is, victims is a hallmark of our criminal justice system and a longstanding measure of just, justice is the the desire to make sure that victims are made whole through, through this process. Um, in addition to being traumatized by the crime, over 40% of people in our country cannot afford um, an expense of a few hundred dollars. Um, so while the research shows that um, impoverished youth, um, youthful offenders are more likely to, they're more likely to be impoverished, they're more likely to be um, young people of, of color. Um, we also find that that's true of victims.
Thank you very much.
It's true of victims. So we urge you to also um, have somebody, as I said, uh, do this research that isn't interested in making sure that they're um.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next is Lauren Walker, Hawaii Friends of Restorative Justice in support. Nico Leverance, Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center. Also in support, um, American Civil Liberties Union of Hawaii. Go ahead. Good morning again.
Aloha, Chair, Committee Members, Karian Sharota on behalf of the ACLU of Hawaii. We strongly support this resolution. It aligns with the principle of using data and evidence-based practices to foster the rehabilitation of youth involved in the justice system. The collection of data is critical to really figure out what's happening. Is it effective? Does it benefit? I know that we were talking, I've heard just about victims, but we also need to look at the whole system. It has been a hallmark of our criminal justice system toward, in certain circumstances, restitution. But we want to broaden and transform our criminal justice system to also allow for restorative justice practices. I can share this personally. I have been a victim of violent crime. I've had family members who have been involved in the criminal legal system, both sides. I had an uncle who was murdered when I was a child, but our system keeps looking at finances. There are things outside of finances and restitution that effectuates justice, accountability, other means to make good for the harm that you've done in the community, and what isn't talked about enough. Sometimes these crimes impacts families, and so having the families at the table to talk about what really matters in terms of restitution. The other thing we need to highlight again, and we can't just dismiss it. We have stark racial disparities in our criminal ecosystem at the adult level and the youth. And so we need to ask ourselves, is the assessment of these youth fines, fees, monetary sanctions, is it creating a debtor's prison for children and their family, which disproportionately impacts Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander families? Just because we've done something for many years doesn't mean it's the most effective. And if we want to really truly transform our criminal legal system and expand what it means to do justice, we need to incorporate restorative justice, and part of that is looking at the data. Is it effective for the resources that to chase after people for families who may not have the resources in the first place? Thank you for hearing this bill and please support it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Um, next up is Berkeley Policy Advocacy Clinic. Good morning again.
Good morning again, Chair Rhodes, Vice Chair Gabbert, and members of the committee. Once again, my name is Amanda Chang, representing the Policy Advocacy Clinic at Berkeley Law. We are grateful for the opportunity to testify in support of SR 202. Despite reductions in youth incarceration in Hawaii, racial disparities in the juvenile system persist. As the ACLU mentioned earlier, Native Hawaiian and, and Indigenous youth from the Micronesian Islands are four times more likely to be arrested, five times more likely to be referred to court, 10 times more likely to be detained, and seven times more likely to be found delinquent than white youth. Given the over punishment of these communities at every point in the system, Native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islander youth are more likely to be ordered to pay monetary sanctions. Over the past two years, our clinic has been conducting legal and legislative research and engaging in, with a variety of stakeholders, including community leaders, advocacy groups, attorneys, judges, and court staff to learn more about how juvenile monetary sanctions operate and affect Native Hawaiian, Micronesian, and other Pacific Islander youth. Unfortunately, data on this subject in Hawaii is very sparse. We learned that no court or state entity is actively and comprehensively tracking data on juvenile monetary sanctions. As Hawaii continues to make bold reforms to reduce recidivism and improve outcomes for youth, collecting data is critical to building holistic rehabilitative solutions. Evidence-based insights will not only allow family courts to identify juvenile case trends, but also to track the progress of existing programs that reduce youth recidivism, such as the Accountability Program of the First Circuit Court, which allows youth to pay off monetary sanctions through community service programs that build vocational and interpersonal skills. We respectfully ask that you vote in favor of SR 202. I'll be available for questions. Mahalo for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next is Leah Delos Santos, Opportunity Youth Action Hawaii in support, Gerard Silva in opposition, Jamie Kavanaugh Institute for Justice in support. That's everyone I have on SR 202. Does anyone else wish to testify in SR 202? Come on up.
Angela Melody Young, um, testifying on behalf of Kapalama Security, Neighborhood Security Watch, um, providing um, just some comments. So, research shows that fees and fines serve no public safety function and may instead undermine public safety by increasing the likelihood of youth recidivism. And because youths cannot afford to pay restitution, crime survivors rarely see any compensation for harm they may have experienced. So the purpose of this resolution um is to uh, urge the Office of Administrative Director of the Courts of the Hawaii State Judiciary to collect, compile, and to share data on the assessment of fees, courts, and costs, and fines, and restitution in cases against minors. Um, and so fees, if fees and fines are not, charging fees and fines are not effective in the way that we address um, youth recidivism, how do we minimize um, recidivism? So, you know, inter- intergenerational trauma, cultural disconnection, homelessness, and other factors can drive and contribute to a high disparity in juvenile offenders. And in the previous resolution, HCR 72, there was a focus about collaborating with the Office of Youth Services and Family Court um, to work with community organizations to maximize rehabilitation and minimize recidivism for juvenile offenders. Um, and the thing is, to simplify, if incarceration recidivism is causing trauma to youths, there should be rehabilitation, educational resources, and healthcare provided. So instead of just putting people away, you are providing resources to correct that behavior so that they can be positive contributors to society. And this can be also explained in the Legislative Analyst's um, summary from the Minnesota House Research about Criminal Law Deterrence.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify in SR 202, Senate Resolution 202? Seeing none, members, questions? Uh, seeing none. Um, members, if you're okay, we'll just go ahead and straight into decision-making. Except, okay. Uh, first up on the decision-making is HCR 51 urging the governor to initiate a clemency program for individuals who have been prosecuted for cannabis-related offenses. What it is is? Yeah. Okay, we're going with as is. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair, on HCR 51.
Uh, Chair's recommendation on HCR 51 is to pass as is, Chair Rhodes.
All right.
Vice Chair Rhodes, I, Senator LeFante.
I.
Senator Sandman.
I.
Senator Owa.
I.
Measure passes.
Thank you, members. Next up is HCR 72 urging the Office of Youth Services and Family Court of the First Judicial Circuit to collaborate in identifying processes, procedures, and strategies for partnering with community organizations to maximize rehabilitation and minimize recidivism for juvenile offenders. The same recommendation here, unamended. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Are members present? Are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you very much. Next up is HCR 74 encouraging the facilitation of a path to citizenship for immigrants from parties to the compact of free association. Um, recommendation here is to pass with some amendments will provide more background information and the whereas statements based on uh, the ACR season, Office of Community Services testimony. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On HCR 74, recommendation to pass with amendments to the members present, any no votes or reservations?
No.
No vote for Senator Owa, and the measure passes.
Thank you. Next up is HCR 87 requesting the Office of Elections to prepare and submit a proposal to the legislature on the cost and personnel required to prepare and distribute a photo information guide. Uh, the recommendation here is to pass unamended. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Of the members present, are there any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next up is HCR 88 requesting the judiciary to prepare a master development plan, including a capital improvement project request to upgrade the South Kohala District Court. Uh, while we did not have testimony in this committee, there was testimony in earlier committees, and I think it's worthwhile to move it forward. So the recommendation is to pass uh, as it is. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
On HCR 88, uh, members present, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the measure passes.
Thank you. Next up is HCR 200 urging the President of the United States to publish the Equal Rights Amendment as the 28th Amendment in the Constitution of the United States of America. I think we've think the issue is fairly clear here. The well, the argument is that because the original Equal Rights Amendment did not have a date, uh, a drop dead date in it, that it therefore did not have a drop dead date, and so when the last state to ratify, ratified it, that's it. So this resolution urges the president to announce that fact. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Is that unamended, sir?
Unamended, I'm sorry. Yes, unamended.
Recommendation pass, HCR 200 unamended. Members present, any no votes, reservations? Hearing none, measure passes.
Thank you. Finally, we have Senate Resolution 202 requesting the Office of Administrative Director of Courts to collect, compile, and share data on the assessment of fees, court uh, costs, fines, and restitution in cases against minors. Recommendation here, as well as to pass unamended. Questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair.
Are the members present, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, measure passes.
Okay, that agenda is adjourned. We do have another agenda at 10:15. The Vice Chair or Co-Chair of Hawaii Affairs. I'll be anywhere. I'm just here to vote. Okay, welcome everyone to the Joint Committee between Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. We have one reso on the agenda for today. It's HCR one oh eight urging the establishment of a Native Hawaiian Intellectual Property Working Group to discuss policies and legislation with respect to Native Hawaiian intellectual property. First up on this one is Polika Goro Inaba for Hawaii County Council District Eight, North Kona. In support, next is Zachary Long for Kahui Leo Leah. Also in support, Trujillo Lewis, Council for Native Hawaiian Advancement. In support, Dana Keave. In support, Nwomi Khan. On Zoom, maybe?
Sorry, Chair, they're currently not on Zoom.
With comments. Allah Puri Malee Napoleon O'Brien. In support, Nancy Jones. In support, Zeb Jones. In support, Marion K. Kapu. Kapu Mi'a. In support. A. That's Puyulani, Connie Gao Alum. In support. Any of you who are here on Zoom, please make yourself known and can testify if you'd like. Laamea Palaika. In support, Dell Beasley. In support, Kweo Pata. In support, Kim Hee Wong. In support. That's all the, that's everyone who signed up to testify in HCR one oh eight. Does anyone else wish to testify in HCR one oh eight? Yep. I'm sorry, who? Debit, okay, great, thank you. In support. Anyone else wish to testify in HCR one oh eight? Okay, come on. Good morning again.
Aloha, Angela Melody Young testifying on behalf of CARES in strong support, and I already testified about this, so you're just going to hear repeat. Okay, so aloha means hello and goodbye and signifies love, compassion, and kindness. And in twenty eighteen, aloha was also legally connected to poke, a bowl of diced raw fish. In twenty eighteen, a non-Hawaiian food chain originated in Chicago. The Aloha Poke Company trademarked Aloha Poke and sent a cease and desist letter, sent cease and desist letters to Native Hawaiian restaurants in Hawaii and Alaska to stop them from using aloha in their businesses. The state legislature responded, passing a resolution which creates a task force to develop legal protections for Native Hawaiian cultural, intellectual property, traditional cultural expressions, and genetic resources. The enacted resolution emphasizes the Native Hawaiians' collective intellectual property rights are based on traditional and cultural knowledge developed over thousands of years and passed down through generations. It also contends that Western intellectual property laws that recognize patents, trademarks, designs, and copyright often facilitate the theft, misuse, and misappropriation of indigenous knowledge by researchers, authors, scientists, biotechnology corporations, universities, and fashion industries, and others. In a response, an Alaskan business owner who received a cease and desist letter told the news, I know people are like aloha is just a generic word. Everyone says it, but not to our people. It's not aloha.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anyone else wish to testify in HCR one oh eight, HCR one oh eight? Seeing none, members, questions? Okay, we'll take a short break for decision-making. Back everyone to the Joint Committee between Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs on HCR one oh eight. Recommendation is to pass with some, having conferred with the Vice Chair of, and the Chair actually, of the Hawaiian Affairs Committee. Recommendation is to pass with a couple of amendments. First, Chair Shima Bukuro would like to add the Association of Hawaiian Civic Clubs to the groups that are would be part of the organization. And then I would also like to add to change it to amend it to say that a majority may add additional members to the working group, not not by consensus. And also we'll move up the reporting date a little bit to forty days before the twenty twenty-five session instead of twenty. Questions or concerns?
Senior Vice Chair for Judiciary. On HCR one oh eight, Chair's recommendation to pass with amendments, Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair Rhodes, aye, Senator Elafante.
Aye.
Senator Sanvino Ventura.
Aye.
Senator Owa.
Aye.
Measure passes.
Thank you for Hawaiian Affairs.
All right, same recommendations for Committee on Hawaiian Affairs.
Members, HCR one oh eight, HCR one recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair Shima Bukuro is excused. Vice Chair Favella.
Aye.
Senator Ihara is excused. I vote aye. Senator Richards.
Aye.
Recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the position for adjournment. Thank you everyone for being here.